Thank you very much for the work that you do.
I'll push the circle.
We brought them in because it's a special night tonight. We want to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for the great work they did. The village resident, John Sackler, was a resident for quite a few years. He was here when I moved out and helped me in quite a few ways. And I know the press coverage wasn't that much on, but John had a difficult situation, I guess it was in the hunting season, the fall, where he got hurt while he had a tree stand. He was down there most of the day. And John's wife, Joanne, called the Goshen Police Department and they contacted the Goshen Fire Department and the Goshen Town Police and the community services of our fine village and town. They did a wonderful job and they found John Sackler. And as a mayor, I'm deeply grateful, and as a good friend of John's, I'm deeply grateful to the Fire Department and the Police Department and everybody else who worked on it. So I want to show my appreciation, that's why I brought the Goshen Emerald Society to bring you guys in. And we have some plaques here. I'd like to present to the Goshen Fire Department, first off, Mr. Chiefs and the Commissioner and everybody, guys, I just want to thank you all. You've all been a wonderful man. John, you want to come on up here? This is John Sackler.
Thank you everybody who has partied, I really appreciate it.
Okay, well, to the Chiefs and everything, the Chiefs and the Fire Congresses, this is presented with appreciation, the Goshen Fire Department, the recognition of your heroic efforts in saving life of the Goshen resident, John Sackler, November 29th, 2010. We salute you and John, you're a great man.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there's his name. These, uh, you find them with a great job and they're assisted by our local police, Allen and Boach. We have plaques for our...
Yes, okay.
This is all that happened, Boach. I think, in my terms, Mayor, they say three or four of them, and I'm not sure. And that, you know, the company, they didn't even complain about the police. I know there's at least three residents of Goshen that are very happy that the police are on the job. They still greet people's plaques, I think it's a very important job, so I'd like to hear from the police. John Sackler was not hunting the village, he was hunting in town. Now, the town police department did an excellent job too, they were on their work with the village's police and the fire department, they also did an excellent job. And I'd like to congratulate you guys and thank you very much for your work. Yeah, okay, you know, as long as my last night is Mayor, don't call me selfish. There's a couple other people I want to thank. We had a very rough winter this winter and to help the fire department get along with, to get to the fires, we had our DPW doing such a great job of helping people get into work by following the roads. And our chief says he comes from Montgomery, you can always tell when he gets to Goshen how good the roads are. So we'd like to give this plaque to Mike Luzelis, the Department of Public Works, and Mike's away, so we'd like to present it to his fine staff and his assistant town. Thank you very much. And also, the unsung heroes of our village is our village staff, the people, the ladies that work in the office, they do such a great job. Besides putting up with me, they put up with the complaints of the residents when they come in with, you know, like, my water bill's a little high, or my sewer bill, or whatever else complaint. Some stuff that they can respond to and sometimes they just have to refer to other areas. But, uh, Meg, I want to thank you and your wonderful staff for doing such a great job. And by the way, there's refreshments here, please take advantage of these refreshments. And while I have a glass, I just want to say a couple other things. Not been a mayor for the past two years and I want to also thank Ted Lewis, building inspector, and his secretary, Ruth Dan, they do a wonderful job, they assist us, they assist, they tell me I have a problem, I go out to see them, they take great care of it. I want to thank Judge Seon and the secretary leader, they do a great job and they're very good at getting grants for us. They do a wonderful job, I'd just like to thank them. Also, I'd like to thank all our boards, the planning board, the zoning board, the environment review board, and our joint recreation board, they do a great job. Also, our senior citizens board, they do a wonderful job. I'd also like to thank my wife and family for putting up with me for the past two years. I keep telling my wife, "I'm the mayor, I'm the mayor," since that never happens. I want to thank Dave Donovan, our attorney, gives me great advice and arranges me in when he has to. And also, Artoli, our engineer, they do such a wonderful job helping us out and I'd like to get around and close all these people. First of all, I'd like to thank the people of Goshen for the honor of being the mayor of the festival. I want to thank you, I really appreciate it, I felt it was an honor. And thank you very much. And there's refreshments here for anybody who wants to partake, I know, I'm sure the fire department wants to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm sure they just die in a chair for President Beatty, but anyway, we're going to proceed with the meeting. I also want to thank the village board for putting up with me for the past two years. And I want to thank them for bringing me and indulging in going into my speech today. I really, it was nice of them, and I've worked with them for the past two years, they do a great job, they're all going to be here for the next two years and they're going to continue to do the great job they have. But also Pete Smith, who's going to be on the board, and our new mayor, Kyle Rady, I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job. And they have a lot of experience and they work together very well, so I want to thank them also for that information. Okay, let's just begin with that.
Mayor Higgins, we just wanted to express our gratitude from myself and the department for working with you in the past two years at the Village more. We appreciate all your cooperation, all your help in all of our ventures that we've been through, especially with our communications network. That was a major step ahead of us for the future, for now and in the future. And without you, your cooperation and the board's cooperation, it wouldn't have happened in the village of Goshen and the town of Goshen owes you an amazing amount of gratitude for what you've done to make this community much safer than what it was before. And we thank you.
While I'm still here, I again just want to say thank you to Mayor Higgins for his service. It hasn't just been two years as mayor, it's been as a village trustee, as a fire commissioner and commissioner, and joint rec. When I think of John, and I think a lot of people feel the same way, I don't think of the word politics. John, he doesn't think in terms of politics. His creed is simple, what's in the best interest of our village, what's in the best interest of Goshen. And for the past two years, before that, it wasn't, decision making wasn't guided by politics, it was done for what's best. And that's how we live. And it's been a pleasure for me to work with you. And I'm going to miss having you on the board, but I'm looking forward to seeing you around the village. But I just couldn't think of a better person for me to be following. And it really has been a pleasure. The village has been very fortunate to have you. But I just want to say thank you to myself and the rest of the board. We have a gift certificate for you and your wife, for El Tesoro, and the car. And I just wanted to again say thank you very much, John, it's been a privilege and you'll be very missed. Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to take a couple minutes to break. There's refreshments here for anybody who wants to partake. And then get there before John's first walk. Thank you very much for coming. village of New York, or Goshen, New York, excuse me. I need a motion to open a public hearing. Second. Okay, we're open to public hearing, this is in regards to the lighting. And we're not going to close the public hearing because we need a lot more information about the lighting within the village. What a new, going to go some houses would be required to put in, we've had some difficulty with them. The lighting is beautiful, but the repairs are kind of costly, so we're looking to cover up with some sort of a hybrid light. We like the style of the lights and we want to continue that, but we want to see if we can cut the cost. But we don't have all the information, unfortunately, Mike and Luzelis, who had someone, is away this weekend. So I'm open to public hearing for anybody who wanted to comment on this issue. And the public hearing will not be closed, we will have another meeting on it with another chance for the public to give their input, but we'd like to hear if anybody has anything this time or they can save their comments for the next public hearing, because it will not be closed tonight. Yes?
I really only got a question, not so much a comment. The lighting series that you referred to, does that only always apply to residential development or will it also apply to commercial? For instance, if the Hume property were sold or if we were adding a new property, would that fall into the same umbrella in terms of lighting?
Yes, it would.
So then, whatever the board would decide then in terms of alternate to what you have?
Yeah, what they have, you know, as I was saying, you know, it was changed by the board a number of years ago to make it historic. It really is very creative and everything, but you know, but what we want to do is make sure that it doesn't cost the village a lot of money down the road, which it's starting to do, you know, because if you don't have the type of lights that Orange County Rock looked at it, they don't fix the heat fix and everything. So, you know, we're kind of something that's still nice and still historic, but you want to keep it, you know, that's right. And, uh, they're mixing something. Or there was different suggestions, if a builder comes in, then they're responsible for it. But there's all different suggestions, and we're just at the beginning of this, we scheduled the public hearing, it's tough to cancel public hearing and reschedule, then it was just to have it and keep it open, so that's what we're kind of doing at this point. Any other comments, any members of the board who want to push a comment at this time?
I'd just like to say that we're looking, I contacted the New York State Planning Federation in order to try and find out ways that other communities are able to maintain the historic character without overburdening the taxpayer and to get samples of their legislation. And I should get to your back on the best of every communication. And the, I had help coming from our planning board members as well. Our goal, my goal, is to maintain the historic character of the lighting because it's been so supportive of, you know, further in the hands and on other levels, but to try to find relief from it falling on the back of the taxpayers.
Okay, and then I'll need a motion, if you continue for the hearing?
Well, you have a couple choices. If you want to continue it, you can continue to a date certain, or you can, in which case you would not have to publish a notice. Or you can continue it without date, in which case you would have to publish a notice.
Well, look for some info for next night, what are you going to do, Boss?
Sure. I think that they would appreciate it if we determined to set date, whether that could be, or we have to republish.
When, Bossy, when do we think we would have?
Well, the difficulty is that they're gathering information for us from others. So if you're going to set a specific date, I would request that you give New York State Planning Federation time to get back to us.
All right, so what are we, in June?
Yeah. I mean, if you put it far enough ahead, I could, I have to dry luck to get it from them.
All right, so why don't you move into second meeting in June?
There's no urgency.
Yeah.
Just so the record is clear, I will be in North Carolina this evening.
Well, then do it with me.
You can do it out there.
No.
The first one is July? July 11? Okay. Take a motion to move the meeting to, to continue the meeting to July 11? Second?
Second.
Okay. Take a motion to go back to the regular session?
I'll make that one.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We have dismissed the village board meeting of 14th March, 2011. Can I get a motion on even? Can I get a motion on that?
Surely.
Second? Okay, any corrections or amendments? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn the village board meeting of 14th March, 2011. All's in favor? You already did, opposed, I guess nobody, how did, village board works said it, 14th March, 21st minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any errands or amounts? No, okay, take a motion, all's in favor, 17 minutes, 14th March, 21st, for signature by the saying aye?
Aye.
Close. We have communications, we have a note from Liz from Montero. I put you to the game. Dear Mayor Higgins and village board members, I'd like to thank you for issuing your proclamation to acknowledge my 25 years in business, I'm truly honored to have this recognition once again, thank you, Liz from Los Angeles. Montanak, and that was very nice of her, and we enjoyed that. Wonderful things to make. Okay, we have training request for the environment review board members, Jason Wilson, to attend an Orange County plan department course, not to exceed $30, and for Debbie Maroni to attend Orange County plan department course, not to exceed $70.
I believe that we know this is requested.
Oh, really? Do you see it on this thing here? Is it on this sheet somewhere?
On the bottom, there are current applied members of the total class with the not to exceed $50.
It's not in front of us, but I definitely got an email saying that he owns also some interest.
All right, let's add, let's add Miguel, what did we say, which one is he going to? Do we know? The one for 70? And what's his name, Miguel?
Miguel Escobar.
Escobar. Okay, oh, Mike, yeah. All right, so we'll add Mike Escobar, of course, for $70, to attend the planning department training. Can I get a motion on this? Second? Any comments?
Just that it's great for anybody that sits on the board, I'll give one more time.
Absolutely, pretty agree more. Okay, call the motion, all's in favor, signature by the saying aye? Opposed? Okay. We have the abstract revotes. Billings examined by the members of the board will approve the courts with abstract 2010 to 2011 under 24 checks, 1365 to 1444, in the amount of $317,078.70. I need a motion to approve this. Second?
Second.
Any comments, problems?
Just that these are already approved, Bill.
And we have the board reviews on these, our treasurer does also. Okay, so for the motion, all's in favor, signature by the saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Okay. We have the 2011 village election results. Okay, copy of the ballot here, we have, for mayor, it's a tight race. With Kyle Ryan, you see 462 votes, various other counties' writings, you see total five votes. Ed Char, you see 400, for trustee, Ed Char, you see 428 now, 428, 428 votes, I'm sorry. And Pete Smith, you see 427 votes, and various other members received approximately five votes on writings. All in position of village judge, Thomas J. Seon, received 331 votes. Rick Frisco, received 83 votes. Richie Mendez, received 175, making Tom Seon a continuance of village justice. The results. Okay, we need, we're coming into budget time, so the village, I need a motion, the village, I'm going to hereby schedule the public hearing on the 4th, 2011, 2012 budget for April 12th, 2011, 7:00 PM, we smooth there after maybe her. Need a motion on that? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signature by the saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have our annual agreement with the county. The mayor hereby authorized your executive agreement with the county of Orange for the application of the fable markings by the county on village streets for 2011 season. Need a motion on this? Second?
Second.
Okay, all's in favor, signature by the saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. We have scheduled a public hearing for this sewer assessment. The village board hereby resolves all the public hearings on April 25th, 2011, at 7:00 PM, to consider raising the special assessments for the sewer, to repay the bond, sewer water to repay the bonds that are in debt. I need a motion on that? Second?
Second.
Okay.
This is scheduled public hearing, the amount there is not listed, we are going to have that information within two weeks, so we'll be sending it out to all of our residents to get the information out there, and it will be published. And the reason we don't have it now yet is we're still waiting for our consultants and accountants to get us definitive figures on a final cost when we mature file. So with that, we should be able to ascertain within two weeks, so that's the reason for that. And also includes reviewing the serial files with the league for the human plant, to have the full assessments covering the full cost of the bonds, and also to pay back orders from general fund orders.
Thank you. That's why you'll be such a good mayor, such an excellent sewer commissioner, on top of everything, just a fine job. Shows he does a great job, and it's a tough job, sewer commission, but he does a fine job, and he's a perfect example. Okay, let's go into, I already did my comments, we're going to trustee comments. Bossy?
Okay, okay. Let me start with the...
I'm sorry.
We have to vote out the seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Okay, all those in favor, closing the public hearing on April 25, 2011. Speaker Bob Isayani?
Aye.
Celebration of your good mayor, he doesn't forget stuff. Okay.
He's not old.
He's not old enough, right? Mossy?
Let me bring that in. Uh, first, I'd like to talk about the work being done on the mayor's office after the terrible flood on the toilet road. We had great cooperation from Ted Lewis, our building inspector, in trying to organize and President Maplewood, where I'm quite training myself, I have a spoken at length here, and luckily, we've been able to come up with help getting air scrubbers, large sea humidifiers, and power floor mats to completely dry out the room and let the, the last, what's it called?
Dromed?
No, not drywall, that's the whole point.
Firewood.
It's the plaster, thank you. Plaster, last, dry out so that it can be patched and does not have to be ripped out. We were very concerned about the wonderful woodwork in there back. The President Maplewood's raid, if you still remember years ago, due to some of the money at an auction in order to be able to bring that back to life. And we were very concerned. There was the cooperation of Mr. Lewis and people helping us, donating. It is not possible we'll end up saving what we might have had to spend and be able to restore it correctly. I'm very excited about that. Thank you. And thank you for your patience, Mayor, and appreciate you, in fact, you can't be in on the first day. Pay some time and do good work.
I know, we go upstairs and, no, no.
You can have the whole front row. As well, the final trees are coming down. We have cooperation of Orange and Rockland, and we're setting up our planting programs to take place. So please, if you are interested, we have some funds from a grant from last year. So if you are interested in having a street tree planted between the sidewalk and the street here in the village, please let us know. You have to fill out a form through the DPW or through the office. And we look forward to having that be a very, very flowering season for us, because we spend a lot of time picking trees down because storms this year will be good to replenish and feel like we're giving back. Uh, the reservoir is full. I don't get to say that very often, the reservoir is full. And we have had some extremely productive meetings with Orange County about the realignment. They're redoing, once again, with another design, the bridge that our CRG well line has to run with, and whether we end up going, we're enabled to, in order to be able to locate our underwater tunnel line for our CRG well water to get to the village, we have to be in total cooperation with the county. And I'm happy to say that on this issue, they have been extremely cooperative and I want to thank everyone, including Orange, for their help in getting this to rain and filling up. And it looks like we can get this done sooner rather than later. That's it.
Thank you, Mossy. And thank you for all the help you've given me. And Mossy's been my deputy mayor for two years. She filled out me when I was on vacation and did a wonderful job. Thank you very much, Mossy.
John, it's been a pleasure.
Okay. Everybody'd be happy to know that the spring bowl cleanup is scheduled for May 2nd to May 6th. There have been no price increases. A hybrid flushing will take place between the week of May 2nd, between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Just a few highlights of the spring cleanup. Just remember, household items only. They have to be at curbs by 7:00 AM on May 2, so that all the junk pickers can get out there and pick through your stuff, so we don't have to pick it up.
Hey.
Each street where we pick up one. White goods, appliances, refrigerator, computers, microwave, TVs will be accepted. No batteries, tires, paint cans full of paint, chemicals, pipes, construction debris. $300, $500 payable for a cold truck load. In addition to that, I just want to add my own, you know, John and I have been friends for 25 years, and I want to add my own congratulations to him for the wonderful job he's done as mayor, but I can't think of anybody else for the last 25 years that's been the unbothered in this community in so many ways. And we're going to miss him. I also want to thank the person for his confidence in me and his commitment to this.
I think I want to thank him for all the great work he's done, you know, talking about people have been involved in this community for a lot of years, and Mau's been involved in this community as long as, as I can remember. And, you know, when I, when I was elected mayor, I had a vacancy, and I looked around for people with the right qualifications, and Mau's name came along, and it was an excellent one. And also, by putting Mau on the board, I wouldn't be the oldest person on the board. Mau's two days old. Believe it or not, thank you for the good job.
Thank you. Um, the world believes this morning, I think it was published in the paper, that on April 9, at the bus garage, at the school, a car seat safety check, free charge, just come on by and a whole check that your car seats are installed properly, to be very safe, the safety service that we offer. And yeah, needs car seats to take advantage of it. Personally, I had the opportunity to run it twice. First time, not so good for me, but good for you. Second time, great for both of us. It's been an honor and a pleasure to have an opportunity to walk around with the two elections title, talk, share facts, other words. People forever, you know, very special place in my heart. And my wife said, I have one question, will you meet before I get to the side of my basement?
I want to thank her, as you said, we read together twice, and our campaign with people, it was, it was enjoyable. It's a lot better going out with somebody than you going out campaigning by yourself, as anybody who's tried to contest to win. It was a joy to go out with her. We, time passed very quick, we froze our bloods off, but it, you know, but we got to know each other and worked together fine. And Ed is our police commissioner, did a wonderful job working with the, uh, fine police chief, Chief Watt. They did a great job on the contract. They came up with a real fair contract, and it, it's really working well. And that's a lot of hard work by Ed, and the chief, I don't know, I think, I do, and does a great job as a police commissioner, which the chief, I can't stand off about him as a one. I don't want to thank him for it. Bye.
All right, and before the story of the rec, there's something new to report that has changed in the past two weeks. Still moving in front of that, I'm just going to reiterate what I said earlier. John, thank you very much for all your service for our community. It really has been a pleasure working with you. And personally, for me, two weeks, years, and three months ago, when I was 23, deciding whether or not to run for trustee, I remembered Jack Higgins and Brian Higgins from school. Brian was my basketball coach in Sarawak Basketball. And I said, you know, let me introduce myself to trustee Higgins at the time, and you were there for welcoming and encouraging. And if you hadn't been as friendly at the time, I don't know if I would have, so I just thank you very much for being the kind soul that you are. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pat. As I said before, you know, Kyle, I feel Kyle's going to be a wonderful mayor. He's done a wonderful job as a sewer commissioner, and spent some tough times. And he jumped in with two feet and really has done a fantastic job. It's, all the jobs are hard. This one, to get your feet wet, is particularly tough at this time. And, you know, he, he just did a wonderful job. I'm sure he did a wonderful job as mayor, and besides being the mayor, and we work together in the board, as would any other member of the board, we became friends, and it will be a lasting friendship. And anytime you need any advice, you can just call me and speak to my wife. We'll give you good advice. We're doing a special thing tonight, since we have refreshments and everything, rather than doing the public comment, we're going to do a public comment with all the people in the board who will have refreshments. So we'll adjourn the meeting, and anybody has any questions, the members of the board will be here, and we'll be using refreshments and everything, and we can, we can all talk and sit around and talk and have refreshments rather than a formal meeting. And I decided this, to do this, so if you want to blame anybody, you blame me. It's my last meeting, so if you don't like this format, suggest a different format for the new mayor. But anyway, I want to thank you very much for helping me, and I do owe you. Thank you. Bye. All right. I just want to, just want to refresh with this, please. Thank you all.
Relax. Sounds good. They want our picture.
Oh. Thank you very much. I think I'm bad. Good night.
I'm glad.
Bye. 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 Bye.